We'll call the meeting to order. Good morning, everyone. We respectfully acknowledge that the county of Halliburton is located on Treaty 20 Michi-Soggeek territory and in the traditional territory of the Michi-Soggeek and Chipewa Nations, collectively known as the Williams Treaties First Nations. We acknowledge the shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. Just as a note, the agenda has been amended to include a request for support from the Aging Together group. So could I have a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda? Counselors Fury and Burton, thank you.
Be it resolved that the March 27th, 2024 Halliburton County Council Agenda be approved as amended.
All in favor? That's carried. Is there any notice of pecuniary interest or a general nature thereof today? Seeing none, could I have a mover and a seconder to adopt the minutes from the March 6th and March 13th? Counselors McKechnie and Shell?
Be it resolved that the minutes from the March 6th, 2024, special meeting and the March 13th, 2024, regular meeting of Halliburton County Council be adopted and circulated.
All in favor? That's carried. And we have no business arising from the previous meeting, so we'll move into delegations. And this morning, we're pleased to have Susan Zambona, who is the Chief Executive Officer of Habitat for Humanity. So if you'd like to come forward. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
And over to you.
I appreciate the invite. So my name is Susan Zambona, and I'm the CEO at Habitat for Humanity Peterborough and Corether Region. Next slide, please, or last slide. Yeah, next slide, thanks. So Habitat fills a very unique spot in the housing continuum. But what we do, we do it really well. So we aren't social housing, we're not rental housing, we're affordable homeownership only, and we're not market homeownership. We do have a board of directors that's made up of individuals throughout our territory. So we have members from the city of Peterborough, the county of Peterborough, the city of Corether Lakes, and we actually have three members from Halliburton County. They, as well as our board, the rest of the board and our staff, want to be building in Halliburton County, and we have not to date. We've built in all the other areas of our service area. Next slide, please. So this is where we're going. In April of 2022, we finished a 41-unit condo in Peterborough, thereby doubling the number of families that we served in our first 20 years of existence. So we've now served 84 homeowners. Sorry, 82 homeowners. And we see this as our future. You know, it's hard to build single-family homes, find land. When you do, the cost is really prohibitive. And we feel we need to, there's such a great need, we need to serve more families. So our board has taken the stance that we will take a little bit more time to get land rezoned for high-density projects, and we'll figure out a way of coming up with money to pay for it. And so, as I said earlier, we really need to build in the county of Halliburton, and we're excited about the opportunity with the We Care Property. And we've also made an early presentation to Algonquin Highlands Council. Next slide, please. There's lots of misconceptions about what Habitat does. People think we give houses away for free, and we don't. And then, we've always asked for money, donations, and so people think that when we come to see someone, it's always, we just, we want, want, want. But we found a way to build and be able to finance what we build. So we used to do what we call the classic mortgage model, no down payment, no interest mortgage, held by Habitat. What that meant was, we would get the mortgage payments for that home over the course of 20, 25, 30 years. But what happens is, as we're building more and more properties, as the interest rates are going up, as the cost of construction is going up, it's harder and harder for us to finance those properties. So what we came up with was a new, a second mortgage model, where we have a financial partner, the Corether Credit Union, who will provide a first mortgage to the homeowner for what they qualify for. So we used to say that homeowners for Habitat didn't qualify for a conventional mortgage, but that's not really true. Most, not all, but most people can qualify for some amount of a mortgage. What they can't qualify for is enough of a mortgage to buy a house in this market, as well as the down payment. So our model takes that into consideration. So if someone can qualify for a $250,000 mortgage, but the house costs $400,000, then we hold a second mortgage for the difference, and they only pay on that first mortgage to the credit union. And what that does is, it keeps their payments at a maximum of 30% of their income, which means it's affordable to them. But they don't pay that second mortgage until they've either paid off their first mortgage or they sell their home, and then they pay us back. At that point, there's an equity stake payable to Habitat, which we'll show you on the next slide. The whole purpose is that we're trying to get enough funds in first mortgages that will help us to cover the cost of construction. So we borrow, we build, we get first mortgages, pay off what we borrowed, and then we can go out and do the same thing over and over and over again. Next slide, please. So this just gives you an example of how our equity stake works. So if the purchase price was $350, the financial institution gave a mortgage for $250, then that means the second mortgage to Habitat would be $100,000, which means our stake in their purchase is 29%. So when they sell or refinance, however much the house has increased in value, that difference is what they share with Habitat. So this was the fairest way we thought we could set up this more, a new mortgage model. We didn't want the homeowner to get all the equity, sell the home, run off. We also didn't want Habitat to get all the equity, because a homeowner is paying a first mortgage, and they do pay interest on it. So we thought this was the fairest way to do it. And when they sell their home, there is a profit to them in the sense that they've paid down their original mortgage to the credit union, a certain amount, and they'll get some of the equity share as well. So we feel that this is a fair way to do this. And the reason I talk about this is because people wonder, how is Habitat going to pay for construction? Well, this is how we're helping to pay for construction. Yes, we still fundraise. Yes, you know, we still look for development charges to be waived. Well, it's supposed to be now, but look for building permit fees potentially to be waived. But this is how we end up paying for this, and we think it's fair to everyone involved. Next slide, please. So this is Leahy's Lane, the first phase that we did, that 41-unit that I showed the picture earlier. It was a $15 million project that we were able to build for $10.6 million. And that's because of partners that we have in the community. Everyone was asked to give a little, right? If we had one general contractor build it, they would probably give us, you know, maybe a 5%, 10% discount. But what we did was, we were the general contractor, and so we had agreements with every trade, every supplier. So all of them gave as much as they could. So everyone gave a bit. And that's why we're able to keep the cost at $10.6 million, which worked out to $172 a square foot. Now, this was, you know, 2022 when we finished. Our interest rate for our homeowners was 1.79%. That's not what it's going to be going forward. But we also had some revenue from CMHC through the co-investment fund. We had cash donations and then our homeowner mortgages. But it was really important to us that we choose families that fit that whole income range, right from $35,000 a year to $84,000, which in Peterborough is what's considered affordable, a maximum of $84,000 for gross household income. And then it shows on the right-hand side what those related to in terms of the amount of mortgage that they qualified. So it's not, you know, the lower-income households didn't qualify for 130 to 165, right? It depends on their debt load, it depends on other things within their household. And it also shows the number of families that we had. So we have young couples, singles, seniors, and single parents in this project. In the past, we have only built for families, because we've built single-family homes or semi-detached homes. So of course you want to build and serve as many people as you can. But then, we had singles and seniors and single parents that weren't able to then purchase a home from us. And so by doing this and increasing our capacity, we were able to serve 57 adults and 17 children in this project, sorry, 19 children, and we've had three babies in the last year and a half added to our families. Next slide, please. I'm not sure if you know about the Restore, but the Restore is our social enterprise, where people donate, either individuals or businesses, donate new and used items that we sell to the public. The funds generated from that are used to cover our operations. So if you, as an individual, donate $50 to Habitat, that $50 goes directly into building more homes. None of that's used for overhead, because we have our social enterprise to do that. So we have added a tool lending library at our Peterborough North store to help, and it really helps with our current homeowners who don't have all the tools they need to maybe do some minor repairs at home. You can come, you get a membership, and then you can come and borrow any tools that you want, that we have in stock, for a week. You can extend it by another week, and there's no additional cost to you. It's just that $60 fee to be a member. We also do pickups and deliveries and home and kitchen deconstructions. And so that's been a big money generator for us. We've done eight home deconstructions and 70 kitchens. So we have partnerships with various builders, as well as kitchen design studios and manufacturers, that if they, if one of their clients is buying a new kitchen, they will suggest to them, you might want to have Habitat come, take out your kitchen with volunteers. Then we take the kitchens to our store, sell them, and then we give them a tax receipt for the value of the kitchen once it's sold. So it's a win-win, and helps keep it out of the materials, out of the landfill. Next slide, please. So we, the next thing that we're working on is a high-impact investment program. So what we figured out to date is, we've got the social enterprise to help us with our overhead. We've got a new mortgage model to help with, cover the cost of construction. Now our issue is financing, low-cost financing in order to help with our cash flow for the builds, not the operation side, but for the builds. And so what we've put together is a high-impact investment program where individuals or businesses can lend money to us, where we would then pay a 12% interest with an agreement that they would donate back 9%. So what we're doing then is getting low-cost financing at 3%. But then you, as an individual, are also getting a 9% tax receipt. But we have to do that 12% to you, 9% to us, to keep CRA happy and all above board with respect to the donation. So far, we've raised, we've just started, we've raised $40,000 just through staff, and it's going to go public soon. So we're hoping that this can help us with that cash flow. Next slide, please. And what's next? So we're currently working on 12 units, which is Phase 2 of Leahy's Lane. They're 12 stacked townhouses. Single-family home in Fraserville. Three single-family homes in Omimi. Those, we're still working on having that property, both of those four units, those properties donated to us. We are currently going through the rezoning process with the city of Peterborough for another 41 units on Lansdowne Street. Hopefully, 60 units in Halliburton, or so, being reviewed by the county. We own property, another property in Peterborough, which could be potentially 83 units. It would need to go through rezoning. We've just gotten the preliminary architectural drawings. And then we're talking to an individual who owns land in Norwood, who would like to donate it, could easily get, well, three units is simple. Could, it's zoned, that we could put six on it. What we might do is get it rezoned to put up to 10. So we're talking to that individual now and reviewing it. And then we've also had just a preliminary, not discussion, but presentation to Algonquin Highlands about potential land that they have. So there's lots that we're looking to do, and would love to be in this county. And so I appreciate the opportunity to be able to tell you a little bit about what we do and some of the changes we've made in how we operate at Habitat for Humanity. And so if anyone has any questions, I'd be, if that's allowed, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you so much. You know, it's just fabulous to see such a wonderful and innovative approach to providing homeownership to low-income families. And, you know, I know that it's changing, but the cost per square foot that you're able to construct that is really rather extraordinary. I've heard as much as $700 a square foot for construction in these days, which is almost unheard of. And I do have to say, on behalf of Algonquin Highlands, we're really looking forward to continued discussions and exploring opportunities there.
Thank you.
So I open the floor to any questions that council have, questions or comments. Counselor Fury.
Well, nice to meet you again or see you again.
Yes, thank you.
I think that's a pretty exciting program, and I have to admire the initiatives that you've taken. It's pretty creative, but you're targeting the right, the right area of people. And in my view, these are the people that really need it. They work, they're contributing to the community. It's a win-win, so. And I didn't realize you picked up kitchens and that. That's a kind of a pretty wise way to raise some money, too. So all good, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Dayu.
Thank you, Susan. And I'm, you know, I'm a big fan, have been for years, fan of Habitat, a fan of the Restore. We go there every time we're in Peterborough. It's a great place to find gems and to contribute to the community. So yeah, full support on all of that. Would you remind me, in order to keep the housing that you build affordable over potentially multiple owners over the course of several years, what is your approach to make sure it doesn't become market value again?
Right. So every house that we sell, it's in the deed and the mortgage. That Habitat has the right of first refusal to buy it back. And so we almost always buy it back. I think it's some of the, in some of, in the beginning, maybe not so much, because it was sometimes cheaper to build a house than it was to buy it back. Not anymore, right? And especially since we hold a second mortgage, it's, you know, it's a lot less expensive for us to buy it back. We then find another family and resell to them with the same conditions. The 41-unit, we've actually bought back two units. You know, family situations changed, you know, a year or a year and a half in. We bought those units back and then have now put new families in there under the same, under the same terms. Yeah. And when you said about the Restore, just if anybody knows of any land or any available place, we would love to be up here in Minden or Halliburton. We've looked, haven't found something that we could afford that would be the right size, but we would love to have a Restore in this area as well. So if you know of something, reach out.
Any other questions or comments? Well, we really look forward to continued discussions about the We Care Property. That's really exciting on so many levels, so we're hoping to see that move forward.
Thank you very much.
Could I have a mover and a seconder to receive the presentation? Counselors Fury and Shell?
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the delegation from Susan Zambona and of Habitat for Humanity, Peterborough and Corether Region.
All in favor? That's carried. Next up are Corporate Services and our financial reports. Good morning.
Good morning, Warden and Council.
So first up is your payroll register.
We had three pay periods in February totaling $744,017.46.
Any questions on the payroll register? Could I have a mover and a seconder to receive it? Counselors Burton and Carter?
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the staff report on the payroll registry for February 2024, and further that the payroll registry for February 2024, with a net direct deposit including $744,000, be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried. And next is your check register.
Our February check register totaled $2,301,282.55.
Are there any questions on the check register? I mean, none? Could I have a mover and a seconder to receive an approval? Counselors Dayu and McKechnie?
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the staff report on check register for February 2024, and further that check register for February 2024, with checks, EFTs, and PAPs totaling $2.3 million, be hereby approved.
All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Next is Information Technology and GIS reports. Good morning, Mr. March.
Good morning, Warden Danielson, members of council. For today is my standard monthly IT staff report outlining some of the stats from our service desk, as well as projects that are currently underway by the IT team and where they currently sit. Have nothing too specific to bring to council's attention. Our records management project is probably the biggest one on here, and it's well underway and continuing to take up a lot of work, but it's very exciting. But other than that, I am more than willing to answer any questions.
Any questions on the status report? I mean, none? Could I have a mover and a seconder to receive it? Counselors Carter and Fury?
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the March 27th, 2024 IT status report.
All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Economic Development and Tourism. Mr. Ovel has a report on a proposed trades partnership.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, members of county council. So just in front of you today is just a new partnership that we've been working probably over the last three or four months with the Halliburton County Home Builders Association and the high school, just to enhance their skilled trades program and in class learning. We view it more as, it's really a workforce development program. It gives some access to our home builders to get into the classroom and further support them, as well as they've graciously donated a lot of, they're both staff time and then some financial resources. So if we can help support them so that they're not paying out of pocket to further enhance the program, that's we viewed our role in this. And then moving forward, ideally, if it works out well and then the KPIs come back, it's something that we'd be looking at, probably trying to do on an annual basis and each year just trying to evolve it and grow it to maximize its impact. And happy to field any questions.
Questions on the proposal? Counselor Carter?
Well, I think it's a great program. Tell me, is the, is the school board contributing anything? It seems that we are, we are funding, the home builders are giving a lot of volunteer time. What's the school board doing?
Through you, Warden. So the school board obviously is funding the program through their budget. The one number I couldn't get from them was the actual overall financial contribution that they put towards the class. Moving forward, it'd be something that I would probably build into the MOU, is just to get some numbers. I think similar to a lot of organizations out there, you know, challenging budget year, no doubt. So it's, the way we viewed it is just, this is a way for us to kind of augment maybe some of the cuts that they've had to face or some of the challenging budget decisions.
Counselor Dayu?
Thanks. I do like this kind of partnership and our ability to reach out and support fostering these connections. I think the most interesting word that you've used for me is "evolution." We just heard a great presentation by Habitat. Their, Habitat is not the only provider of affordable, attainable housing in our, in our county, and it could be an interesting way of eventually, as the years go on, stitching together some of these different groups and efforts into bigger and bolder things. So let's keep an eye on that "evolution" word.
Counselor Rayal?
Yeah, that's exciting, Scott. I really, I really think it's time we started to look at the youth, because, you know, universities are a great option, but trades are what we need the most. And I guess my question would be more related to really looking into the future. Did you see any conversations with the school board that would indicate that they may or may not be considering looking at trades as curriculums in part of a future option?
Through you, Warden, happy to have that conversation with them. We're just kind of, this is the first step in the process. And I think as it builds, and as I said, if the KPIs come back with something that we're happy with, we're, you know, more than willing to engage in those conversations with them. I viewed it as something that perhaps, if we're successful, it could be something that maybe could be duplicated or replicated in other areas of the province. I do know I've had some colleagues reach out after reading the report. So if that is the case, then that probably gives us a little bit more strength if we were to approach them as some bigger numbers, I suppose would be the best way to put it. Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Fury?
Well, I'd just like to say that in my day, that was called shop. Everybody took the course, not a long time ago, by the way. But I think that, I think it's the right thing to do. There's a need for jobs, and we need people who have trades, skilled trades, in trades. And that's a good, I think we need to do more of those sort of things.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Could I have a mover and a seconder then to authorize staff to enter into an MOU with the home builders? Counselors Rayal and Fury?
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives the March 27th, 2024 Skills Trades Partnership Report for Information. And further that Halliburton County Council authorize the Warden and the Clerk to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Halliburton County Home Builders Association for the partnership.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you, Scott. Nothing under tourism, although we look forward to getting a report fairly soon. Under physician recruitment, just a note for council's information, there will be a recruitment dinner on May 29th, I believe, and we'll be hearing more details about that before that event happens. We look forward to that. Nothing under EMS. Nothing under EMS. Under administrative reports, I, I believe that we have a, a policy being presented to us for access points to county roads. Good morning, Seth.
Good morning, Warden and members of council. The report I have today is basically a follow-up report to a previous report that was brought forward to county council on October twenty-fifth of twenty-three. Staff essentially is returning with some follow-up information regarding the original presentation of the access policy. So essentially, a standard document will provide familiar and consistent processes when acquiring entrance permits from various municipalities. So it'll be one, one document that all municipalities will manage their, their own document and their own policy. So it'll make it more consistent and, and familiar for people using the, the application and the policy. Staff have consulted with the insurance, with the county's insurance provider in regards to the two million versus the five million liability coverage. The insurance provider did recommend a higher limit, understanding that a balance between coverage and affordability to start, they recommended that we can start with the two million coverage with a review date to reassess the coverage. And if, if required or better to bring it up to the five million for a limit of liability. The municipalities agreed that the step approach for the liability insurance would be probably the, the way to go with the two-year reassessment from the approval date of the policy. So if approved, each municipality will bring the policy to their respective council for approval as well. We'd like to answer any questions.
Any questions for Sil? Councillors Carter, then Councillor Fury.
I know that you, you said in here that you consulted with the municipalities on the insurance. Was this document developed with all of the municipalities together?
Yes. Yeah, it was developed through our service delivery.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Councillor Fury.
Well, my concern, of course, you know, one of the concerns I've got, we got a mess on twenty-one. But to go farther, have we got a mechanism to reassess? If I have a commercial driveway and I got a building on it and I got five employees, then I put a building up and I'm going to have fifty-five employees and we triple or quadruple the traffic. Do we get a chance to go back and look at that as a county? If we don't, we're creating all kinds of problems.
I believe that through the, the planning process, we can reassess entrances, accesses to property for rezoning, development processes. So we, there is a mechanism in place that, that is possible.
Yeah. So we can, but we didn't. So that's the problem, I think. Anyway, not you, by the way.
Believe the CAO has a comment?
Thank you, Warden. Through to Councillor Fury. Just to add to, to Sil's comments, yes, through the site plan control process, the municipalities and by extension, the counties being the road authority have the authority to put further restrictions or conditions on the approvals based on new use. Because to use your example, to go from a five-person to a fifty-five-person place, it changes the dynamics of the entrance and that would have to be reapproved by the county if it's our road. And then we can put further conditions on the site plan to address any access concerns, do volume geometrics on the entrance if they're going from small to large trucks. All that can be reassessed as part of the site plan control process.
All that, as long as we do it.
That's correct.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, could I have a mover in a second or then to adopt the policy and to authorize staff to bring a bylaw forward? Councillor Rayal, seconded by Councillor McKechnie. Thank you.
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council received for information, the March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four staff report, recommendation to adopt the new county access policy PWO two. And further, that Halliburton County Council adopt the new county access policy PWO two. And finally, that staff be directed to present bylaws authorizing the warden and clerk to authorize the new county access policy.
One favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda was an additional item, the request for support from the Aging Together as a Community group. And Sue Tiffin is going to give us an update and some information on that. Good morning.
Good morning, Warden Danielson and members of council. Before you is a staff report on a collaboration opportunity between the county and a community group, Aging Together as Community. The Aging Together group has proposed a series of workshops that brings together local seniors aged fifty-five plus to highlight health prevention and promotion, decrease isolation, broaden the community discourse around topics of aging and provide useful information. The Aging Together group is requesting county support to submit an application to the Ministry for Seniors and Accessibility's Senior Community Grant Program for funding for these workshops. Staff believes this workshop series aligns with the goals of the county's Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan in creating opportunities for information communication and information sharing and connecting residents to each other, as well as available services and supports in the community to promote safety, a sense of belonging, opportunities to participate and ability to meet needs. After meeting with Aging Together's community representatives and the province's regional development advisor, staff identified a risk in appropriate insurance coverage. Staff have worked with the Aging Together group and the county's broker to limit this risk. Staff in the Aging Together group have agreed in principle to draft an agreement outlining responsibilities, implementation and evaluation of the project. The Aging Together group has also agreed to obtain their own insurance coverage. Today, staff are seeking council approval to move forward with the, this grant application. The Aging Together group has completed the application and with council's approval, staff will work to submit it prior to tomorrow's deadline. Staff in the Aging Together as Community group believe this will be a partnership benefiting the community safety and wellbeing of the senior population and the county as a whole.
Questions on the request for support, Councillor Fury?
It's an admirable initiative, but where does it go after we get the grant? What, what are the implications for the county? Just because I know all your talks with things that are coming out here.
Sure. Thanks. Thanks for that, Councillor Fury and through you, Warden Danielson. So for, from my standpoint, for, for the support that I can offer at this time, I can help make connections for the group with the subject matter experts and with those who can support the most, most vulnerable in our community to participate. I can help promote these workshops that they're planning to local service providers' networks. I can help offer further data where it's needed. And I can share information about Halliburton County's CSWB plan and priorities and where folks can access more support at the actual events. So I don't need to attend, but depending on my, my capacity at that time, I'm willing to attend.
Other questions or comments? Councillor Dayu.
Something that we've all recognized from time to time at the table is that we've got a silver tsunami happening and upcoming. And this is, I think, a really good way of keeping one more finger on the pulse of that. And so I'm in support. And the more information you can offer us from this for our good decision-making, I think would be really valuable.
And I would think that that would flow through the Community Safety and Wellbeing Committee. Councillor Carter?
Just to clarify what Councillor Fury said. So at the end, I mean, we are offering our support in order to, for a grant to be acquired. But this very much becomes this group's project and not a county project in any way, shape or form. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I wonder if you could tell us the value of the grant that they're applying for?
The value is twenty-five thousand dollars.
Any other questions or comments? Could I then have a mover in a second or two to provide support to the application? Councillor Dayu, Councillor Fury.
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information, the staff report on Aging Together as a Community Senior Community Grant. And further, the county indirect the warden and clerk to enter into an agreement on behalf of the county with Aging Together as a community for the purpose of applying for the seniors' community grant.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you.
Thanks so much, everyone.
Just as one's a small additional item, there, under other administrative reports, our CAO wanted to just give us a brief update on the provincial budget and how that might have an impact on us.
Thank you, Warden Danielson. As the, as you're aware, the provincial budget was released yesterday. And after a quick read of the highlights and some, a quick read of some of the text of the budget itself, I noticed a number of things have a direct relationship to our operations. But also, I think it was important to note that a number of the items were directly related to the presentations we made at Roma with respect to areas of healthcare, surplus land, things of that nature. But also some of the other, traditionally, some budget items that we put forward in the twenty-four budget, there appears to be funding streams that may be accessible through the budget. So I'll go to a high level with respect to what's in the budget and how we may go forward with it. And probably in a, in a couple of weeks, we may get a chance to read a little more detail on the budget, talk about how it really does apply to us and the mechanisms by which we can hopefully access some of this money. Under the housing front, the province has agreed to release surplus land currently that the province holds for housing and social infrastructure, which is one of the key tenets of our one presentation at the, at the Roma Conference, which is good news. And hopefully with that will come a decrease in regulation and how we access that land and how we move forward with it. And hopefully, the, the elimination of the criteria for us to pay market value for it if we do access it going forward. May or may not be that applicable to us in, in, in Halliburton County, but may have implications going forward. They've streamlined the process for the implementation of the vacant home tax. It's a big issue in, in the larger urban centers where people are sitting on homes and leaving them vacant. But they've eliminated the need for the approval of the minister to, to impose a vacant home tax and must streamline the process to something we'll keep an eye on to see if that becomes an issue with, within the county as well. Hundred fifty-two million dollars over three years to address housing for the vulnerable sector, which is key because that was a missing piece in access to housing with respect to the vulnerable, vulnerable sector, including mental health and addiction. So that money will, will flow through our, our partner agencies, but it's, will have an impact on our ability to support a, a big sector, a sector of our community. One billion dollars in new housing infrastructure. I don't have a lot of detail what that is, but generally, I want to understand from pre-budget consultations, that's going to be access to funding that for infrastructure expansion directly, directly related to new housing. There will be a, a new funding tranche of money available to municipalities. Our big hope is that it's not only the GTHA that actually does migrate outward into the rest of our province as well, as well as an additional six hundred and twenty-five million dollars for expansion of, of water systems, which is another key area for us going forward. In the area transit, there's a five million dollar fund for local inter-community transit, particularly underserved and unserved rural areas in Ontario. So that's a key interest for us with the pilot project we have going forward on interconnectivity between Minden and Halliburton going forward. An interesting one, which is more of a bureaucratic technical piece, is the, the property tax assessment is currently under review with consultation in early spring. Don't know what that looks like or when it's going to be, but that's important because it's talking about how they're going to address the reassessment and hopefully talk about the implications of continuum use of the property taxes, our main source of revenue going forward. And has also some implications because there hasn't been an implication of the reassessment since COVID in twenty twenty, which is actually a holdover from four years previous. So we have quite almost a ten-year, we're eight years now in to the non-reassessment, which have an impact obviously on our, our community, but also the cash flow for the county and our, and the local municipality as well. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out over the next number of months. And lastly, and certainly not least, is under the healthcare window, which was another one of our principal presentations at the Roma Conference. There's, they've released for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, nine hundred and sixty-five million dollars into the healthcare system to support local communities, which I think is a key for us. One of the ones here is a four percent increase in base hospital funding, which is, which was very important to the small rural hospitals like, like we have here. And funding to ease pressures on small and northern hospitals. Again, it's, it's kind of a double up piece that comes out of the, the nine hundred and sixty-five, nine hundred and sixty-five million dollars. Five hundred and forty-six million dollars over three years to enhance access to family doctors and primary care, again, which is, is a key factor, not only here, but within our area as well. And particularly with our, the, the uniqueness of Halliburton County, where we have the influx of, we have our core permanent residents. We also have the influx of, of the temporary residents in the, in the, in the, in the summer season and, and how that will help us going forward. And an additional fund specifically dedicated, fifty million dollars to healthcare capacity in rural and northern communities. And Warden Danielson did issue a, a letter on behalf of council about a month or so ago requesting that the, the minister and cabinet pay attention to rural areas in Ontario, outside of Western Ontario and Northern Ontario and, and look at it, we in Ontario as well with the needs we have in the healthcare sector. So those are the, the primary highlights, I think, at a really quick glance at the budget, how they're going to, may or may not impact us as we go forward on some of our directly related or not directly related issues going forward. But I'll attempt to have a more detailed report to council in the next couple of weeks as to how it, how we access or what the direct implications of the, the budget is on the county.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? We'll save that for information. Okay, and next on the agenda are approvals of reports and recommendations from the Joint Accessibility Committee, which I don't believe we have at this point in time. Then we're into reports and minutes from external boards and agencies, starting with the health unit. Any update, Councillor Rayal?
Yeah, there's, there's a few. In, in terms of the current priorities, measles now is becoming an issue in, in Ontario. Some general information.
Turn your volume up just a little bit?
Turn my volume up?
Or, or just be a little bit closer to the, to your computer?
I can be a little closer.
There you go.
Absolutely. Yeah, the, the, the current priorities, measles is raising its head in Ontario. So the general information that we, she would, we want to share is the, the infection period is four days prior to the rash, the rash period, and then four days following. And the turn, the transmission rate is typically one infection can generate up to sixteen additional people. The immunization program, one dose gives you roughly eighty-five percent immunization. Two doses will move that up to ninety-five percent. It's a lifetime protection through either vaccination and/or infection. And prior, those prior, born prior to nineteen seventy are very low risk because most of those have either had contact with measles or have been immunized. And if you're not sure, additional doses for those that aren't sure are, are not harmful and certainly will improve your protection opportunities. COVID influenza and RSP activity is progressing as it's been projected. School immunization program is proceeding as scheduled. And the bad news is in opioid drugs, there's a large occurrence now of product contaminated by non-fentanyl-related ingredients, which means they do not react to normal emergency drug treatments and, and cause unusual and sudden mortality rates. This is not a good thing. I guess the main thing that's been occupying us for the last little while is the potential merger of the HKPR and the Peterborough Public Health Unit. The decision to merge has been passed by both the Peterborough Health Unit and the HKPR. The case study will be presented to the province on April the second. The legal, the legal name for the new health unit has been defined, but the operating or promotional name has not. So that, that, that'll be done once we get a better idea of, of how that's going to be named. The new board composition has been defined and it's been submitted to the province for approval. Halliburton County has a seat on the new recommended board composition. Financial support and implement, and implementation timing are still the main concerns. Obviously, with the impact of the provincial budget yesterday, that has yet to be analyzed as to how that will impact what we're doing. The application can be withdrawn if, if, if the group is not satisfied with the government negotiations. So we're not locked into this merger. We can back out if we need to. The withdrawal date has yet to be confirmed. So staff are currently proceeding with further composition and service scope for the new unit. And no major changes will be made until the approval is reached with the province. And that's the report for this year.
Questions for Council Rail? Thank you, sir. Next is Point in Time, Council Dye.
Thank you. The more time I spend on the Point in Time Board, the more I wish that we could all spend time on the Point in Time Board. The learnings that I'm getting from engaging with that group are extraordinary, all in relation to the amount of vulnerability that we have in our county and the nature of vulnerability amongst the families in our county. And I remain extremely impressed and proud of Point in Time's professional capacity to, to address those needs in a very organic and responsive way. So I wish we could, we could all sit and listen in to their conversations all the time. The one, the one piece that I'd like to highlight at the minute is that as per the minutes that you've got in front of you, Point in Time has reached out to a consulting group who has helped, who as per these minutes, was beginning to help them to do a full spectrum assessment of their spatial needs. How they reach out to vulnerable families, what they offer, the sorts of conditions that make those families feel comfortable and safe and welcome in participating in Point in Time's work. Things that have to do from, everything from medical needs all the way through justice and legal support needs. To look at their current facilities, the buildings that they have, which are sort of spread out a little bit, and determine whether those buildings are in fact most suited to the needs of the community and the offerings that Point in Time give them. Or indeed whether a different setup would be more appropriate. And probably no surprise to anyone, what they've got now, great spaces, but not entirely conducive to the sorts of offerings they have for the community. So it's a slow process, but they are looking at, you know, what would be the best physical space for us? What might it look like? Where might it be? How might it cost, et cetera? So as for these minutes, they were just starting out on that journey. And when the next minutes roll around, I'll have a bigger update for you on that. But that is where Point in Time is, the Point in Time Board is looking currently. The space itself is one thing, the design is another thing, the funding is a third thing, but the location is also going to be crucial. Where might they be able to eventually put such a facility that would be central, easily accessible by folks from all over the county? Public transport possibilities for the future, and that is feasible financially for them to acquire. So this is a question that I think is going to come back and back, and I wouldn't be surprised if we get a bit more information at this table about that as the months progress. But they've certainly got their eye on that ball at the minute.
Thank you. I do have to mirror the comments you make about Point in Time. Having attended a number of their AGMs, I just found that the passion and that the work that they do for local families is really rather extraordinary, truly a feel-good experience. That's all right. As to the Eastern Ontario Wardens Caucus, we had a two-day session in Kingston. Unfortunately, I had to miss the first day, given that we had a council meeting that day. The Wardens Caucus is working on a strategic plan for the next five years. Must say it's a somewhat different process than what I have normally experienced for strategic planning. But nonetheless, an absolute excellent, excellent process for us to go through. To begin with, some of the primary issues that were identified as priorities were things like infrastructure, housing, health, economic development, the environment and climate change, and childcare. Now, after quite a bit of discussion, they honed in on housing, health, government relations, and infrastructure. So there's continuing work to be done. It wasn't a process that we finished in that two-day section. There's working groups that have been established. You know, for instance, you know, under the, the health portfolio, we're looking at some, a comprehensive review and a communications plan. You know, looking at where there are overlaps, establishing best practices for recruiting. You know, looking at the, at the Ontario Health Team mergers and how that impacts Eastern Ontario. And the point was made that, you know, basically the municipalities, whether we want to or not, are, we're already involved in healthcare, basically from the cradle to the grave in so many different ways. And, you know, therein it lies its importance to continue to work on those files. Under housing, we talked about advocacy for funding, you know, trying to look through a greater rural lens, you know, when it comes to housing and encouraging the province to do that. Trying to share as much information as we have on some of the work that we've done with respect to housing with all of the 113 municipalities in Eastern Ontario. We talked about the possibility of having an annual housing summit in Eastern Ontario, lobbying NGOs in every way that we can, for instance, like Hydro and Bell and Enbridge, so how we can work together and how we can improve things in the housing market and, and use the growth studies that many of us have already done to, to assist in that work. Under the government relations, you know, we talked about how we need to change our messaging and to, to let, there's a number of people who aren't aware of the Wardens Caucus and what they do. So we need to get that message out in a better way. So there's going to be, you know, and we, and we want to ensure that we're speaking with one voice because we all basically have the same needs. And to have that voice move in a multi-directional way, both up to the province, to the feds, and down to the, to the lower tiers, so that we're kind of all on the same page. And, and, you know, have a focus on our approach. It would seem that in many ways, our approach to, to the province through our delegations is often not successful. And quite often, to be quite honest, we go with hat in hand, we go asking for things. And so we talked about how our approach could shift and, and, you know, sort of phrase it in a way of, we know what your priorities are. How can we help you? How can we work with you? How can we work together and see if there's a better response and reaction to that sort of approach? As I, again, reemphasize who the Wardens Caucus is and increase the voice that we have. We even talked about doing a bit of a, of a dog and pony show to the member municipalities, you know, have representatives from the caucus and staff, literally over time, go around to the, to the various municipalities and just sort of spread the word and encourage greater working together. And I think for now, there was a lot of discussion about infrastructure and the things that we need to do with respect to infrastructure, seeking particularly sustainable and predictable funding, which is always a challenge for all of us somehow, even though the government has established to cut the red tape department, they have seemed to have increased the red tape. So trying to put a focus on how we can reduce the red tape. And I did ensure that one of the things that was tossed into the mix was the issue of surplus lands, crown lands, how we access crown lands and how we access them and get something less than market value. So there's a lot of work to be done and I'll be able to bring back more information on, on that as, as the working group continues to refine, you know, our priorities and how we move forward with it. So that's it for me unless there's any questions. Okay, anything on joint and social housing?
So you have the minutes here. Unfortunately, the, the way they're presented, they're somewhat cryptic. The, but much as I reported last time, you'll see in here a couple of times where we looked at, I think our next meeting is May 15th, in which we will be putting together a number of ideas, concepts for presentations, delegations at EMO. And we want to work together with the city of Coorth Lake since, you know, that's what this committee is. And the idea of potentially having the county and the city of Coorth Lakes making a number of joint delegations. The one thing that, you know, that comes across is, you know, in, in what you just said, Warden, and the report that came from Council Dye. This whole area, we think about what we've seen today. We've seen Habitat for Humanity and Point in Time, which are two somewhat non-governmental groups that are, that are, are doing things to sort of help our communities in, in this area of, you know, health and wellbeing and housing, which is, which is kind of a continuum. What you just talked about, what's the important things to be dealing with? You know, you started talking about poverty in general, but then you start talking about healthcare and social services and housing and transportation. And we have all these different groups. They're all trying to work a piece of that, you know? And in a number of ways, when we, we look at what you just said, the government, you know, tried to get rid of red tape and they've created more red tape. In a lot of ways, you know, we just need, not going to say government to get out of the way. But if we look at what Habitat is doing, you know, they have an innovative way of, of trying to build houses. When we look at some of the challenges that we have here in this committee, here when we talk about housing, it's, it's the way the rules are written. Like we don't, we're not looking for handouts. We can, you know, we can afford to build houses. Our problem right now is that the way the money is made available to us from the government is that, A, you have to pay it back, which is unfortunate but understandable. But the point is, is that you have to pay it back immediately. And we cannot make a housing project profitable immediately. It's because of all the rules and how people have to come off of a list and be accepted and get into the housing. It takes us one to two years to get a building fully occupied after it's fully built. Plus, it's taken us a couple of years to build it. All that time, we, there's been interest that we had to pay on loans. And then in the first couple of years, we're in a situation where we have to, again, pay back loans in principle. But we're not making enough money to cover it because the building isn't occupied yet. And so we, we're in this situation where the government says, well, then you can't build it, you know? And so we, we get caught in all of these, you know, silly rules, you know? In a lot of ways, you know, what you just said about a new approach to talking to the provincial government is to go in there and say, how can we make you look good? And, you know, there are a few simple things that could change, that could make all of these committees be able to work together. I, you know, I really, you know, feel for community safety and wellbeing because almost all of this comes under that umbrella. Because when we start taking to the, the police detachment boards, because the police get very much involved in a lot of social issues now and mental health issues and healthcare, like all of this fits together and is interrelated. And, you know, we have to find a way to try to make it, I don't know, I'd like to say to make it simpler. But we have to find a way that we can get through some of these rules. And hopefully we can do that by trying to convince the, you know, senior levels of government to work with us a little bit better. It's, we're spending all of this damn money on all of these programs, but we're not able to get the results that we could if it was just organized a little different. So anyway, that's a long way to talk about what the committee has been doing.
It's unfortunate, though, that to make any headway, you've got to approach a level of government with a, how can we make you look good approach? It's just, to me, that's sad, but whatever works, you know, in, for everyone concerned. Okay, any questions for Council Carter? So, oh, sorry, Council Fury?
A question, it's a comment. I think one of the problems is we've got too many organizations all trying to do the same thing or part of the same thing. So the government's sitting there and they got dozens of delegations from different groups. If we reduce those to have a common purpose and went forward, I think we'd be a lot more successful.
Next up is the library board. Anything to bring to us, Council Shell?
We have the two sets of minutes before you. I was actually absent for the second set of minutes. That was the special meeting. But we have met since, since then, which obviously the minutes aren't forward yet, but that was on the 13th, I believe, after county council. And happy to report that the board did take the, the suggestion of the recommendation that the reserves would be used to work things out within the library budget for this year. The CEO will be doing a vast study of the way things work there, staffing model, et cetera, and coming back with that. Originally, we had, she had said June, but that might be a little bit ambitious. So, you know, as a board, we've said, if it needs to take a bit longer, let's, let's get it right so that hopefully next year, we're not looking at having to do the same type of dip. But other than that, if there's any questions, I can't think of anything else.
Yeah. We look, actually look forward to, you know, the work that she's able to do and report that she.
Yeah, she, I think she, she has some good ideas. We just have to give her a chance to put them on paper and explain them to us.
Any questions for Council Shell? Could I then have a mover in a second or two to receive the reports from external boards and agencies, Council Burton and Rail?
Be it resolved that Halliburton County Council receives for information the following, the February 15th, 2024 minutes of the Halliburton Court of the Pioneer's Health Unit. And the March meeting summary report, January 23rd, 24 minutes of the Point in Time. February 21st, 24 draft minutes of the Joint Social and Housing Services Advisory Committee. And the approved minutes of the very 14th and March 1st, Halliburton County Public Library Board meetings.
All in favor? That's carried. Next, we have other external boards and agencies. And first is CPAC, Council Burton.
Thank you, Warden. We did have a meeting on March 15th. We did get all the reports on the calls and, and staffing. Main focus of the meeting, the station commander, detachment commander had brought in Lisa Darling. Lisa is the executive director of Ontario Association of Police Services Board. And she was there to, to help guide us through our new venture with our police service board. She's very familiar with the area. She's very familiar with the station commander, detachment commander. And she is going to be there to assist us and give us input or help us through the process. There is going to be quite a few courses and a lot of training for this police services board.
It was somewhat daunting in a way when you saw the amount of work that we've got ahead of us. Council Carter?
Can I just add a comment there? I think that in, in our conversations with Ms. Darling, we. conversations with Ms. Darling, we left her with a number of questions that she had had to answer. And and I know that, and we've been getting a lot of requests about the whole idea of the civilian members on the board. And I think that one of the things that, you know, we will be able to do is potentially get this board up and running because we would have a quorum with just the appointed members. And then we would come up with the process by which the civilian members could be appointed. And so, you know, I think just the general message to the public is there'll be more information to come. It's not, it's not all set in stone as of yet as to who, how we're going to appoint them and who will be appointed, sort of.
Well, and and just to add to that, the one thing that that we did raise during our discussion was the fact that the county was was hoping and approaching the province about the ability to have a public member appointed as opposed to a member of county council. And they've agreed to follow up on that.
And I'm not just sure where we're heading with the provincial appointment yet either. That was probably one of the questions was left with her as well.
Obviously, we need to have further discussions about about that. Go ahead.
You know, I think the the idea is because it's a seven member board, if we will have four members on that board, so we have quorum, so we can at least start the process and start this getting getting this underway because there's an awful lot of steps to making this into an effective body.
Any questions for councillor Burton? Mr. CEO?
Thank you, Warden Danos. Just a point of clarification on on councillor Carter's point. In my discussions with the province, and this is a clarity point, and and who's going to ask for clarity? I don't want three people trying to ask the same question. So I'm because we were in the process of dealing with the province with respect to the framework for the for the new board. And it is because it is run by the municipality, not by the OPP. So that's that's a point I I think it's important. Secondly, is we were advised by the solicitor, office of solicitor general that while we didn't have to have the actual public members appointed by April first, we had to have the framework defined by April first. And so that's the message that came directly from Solgen. So I'm just curious as to, I'm going to somebody, whether I don't have a problem doing it or what Sue doing on the inside is getting clarification on what their definition of framework was. And because it's very clear as to the regulations set out who sits on the board and what those configurations are. So a modification of the configurations will require a modification to the regulation.
Councillor Carter?
When we spoke of that with Ms. Darling, she felt that, you know, that was different than what has taken place in other service boards and were the general rules. So she was going to talk to the solicitor general or their her contact within the the ministry to try to ascertain what exactly were the rules. It the basically, you know, again, after they waited how many years to put all this together and then decide to do it by April first and not give clear regulations and so on, there seems to be different messages that are being given to different groups. And she was hoping to clarify those for us. That's that's what we got there, so.
Just this well, and so that's that's fine. And I'm not looking to create extra work for myself. I just, I'm a touch confused and I do apologize. I don't mean to be pejorative with that as to who's doing administration function for the board. Is it being done through the detachment or is it being done through the county? Because I'm I'm I have questions out into 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 Solgen. And if we have another agent asking the same or hopefully the same question in the Sol, I just because I was not invited to that meeting. So I I'm just curious, I just want to make sure I'm not working at cross purposes for.
I think it was it was clear that that it's it's our role and responsibility to look after the administration. And from what I gathered from her was all she wanted to do was really support any request that was coming.
That's excellent. That's that's excellent.
But but point well taken. I obviously, we've got some work to do and we likely should include you in in the next meeting because there's there's lots, lots coming out of us going forward. Councillor Carter?
Just one point of clarification. She does not work for the OPP. She is a part of a separate, totally separate organization that is the association of all the police detachment boards in Ontario. Okay, so she doesn't work for the OPP. She is ex OPP, but she doesn't work for them. It's a separate organization that looks after police detachment boards.
Helps and supports the detachment boards.
That's fine. I just want to make sure I'm not doing one thing and should be doing something else. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on that? Uh, next on the agenda are is an EORN update. And you'll see that there is a report on the on the number of of towers and upgrades. I I would just say as an aside, there was a little bit, you may have heard, there was a a little bit of a problem with the tower that went up in the Maple Lake area, given its proximity to the airport. And what happened was that the tower went up. Bingo, it's there. Ninety meter tower, no lights in proximity to the airport. And that was something that that was a Hydra was not available. And Rogers was urged to get a generator in there as quickly as possible. I've got to say that our a public works manager was on it right away and did some excellent work. And there are now lights on the tower, but there was extraordinary input from the aviation community. Otherwise, things are going reasonably well. Anything under poverty reduction? Councillor Carter?
Just one other group that is 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 not here is ATWUMPS. And just wanted to report a little bit on what's happening with ATWUMPS, which is the Upper Trent Water Management Policy Group, which is made up of the county, the four municipalities, plus the two municipalities in North Peterborough. And looking after water. As you know, there's been much talk about the idea of of a watershed council. So the, in May, early May, we are having a presentation made to the ATWUMPS group by Muskoka Watershed Council. And basically what they are doing. It's always interesting to be dealing with Muskoka. It's sort of like Halliburton with more zeros after the number. And so they they are going to be talking to us and ATWUMPS may be coming back to county and municipalities with a with some ideas on how we might go forward and the idea of a watershed council. Generally, not talking about, not a conservation authority, not a body that's going to get involved in regulations or anything like that, but maybe a body that takes over things like the water testing and advises the county or the municipalities about policies and so on. But we're we're talking to the Muskoka folks to see if we can model it to at a, you know, sort of a a smaller level, but covering off most of what they do.
I'm wondering if there's been any update or follow up on the concerns that was raised about the was it wasn't a GIS program? Or a a a program that had been developed to to map out flood areas? Was it? It was a concern that was raised by ATWUMPS initially. And was brought to this council. I'm sorry, I'm not being really clear about this one.
We we, okay, so, yes. The so ATWUMPS is also one of the members is the 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 Community for Equitable Water Flow. And they attended the presentations about our new GIS mapping and the LiDAR mapping for the area. And they made a number of recommendations, which I think were presented here, if I'm not mistaken. It's basically, it was because the folks at Gannaraska were not really familiar with this area. You know, sometimes some of the wording that they use that a minor, you know, a minor change is is a minor change on the map. But if it's downtown Minden and it's a flood, that's a big change. So they, it was just trying to make the the mapping easier to use for the public and and a number of different things that they were just communicating with Gannaraska about. Nothing negative. It was just.
I'm just I'm just hoping that there have been some improvements made because I I know there were some concerns raised about how user friendly it was for the public.
Right. Mr. March may be able to contribute more to that than I could.
Hi. I I'm unfamiliar with the specifics, but I have been in contact with Gannaraska. So what I can do is reach out to them. See, discuss the the issues brought forth by ATWUMPS. CWF, sorry. And also make sure that any of the issues that were brought up during the open house are being addressed. And then I can, yeah, I can bring something back. I know they're preparing some of their final work for the end of the project and the plan is to bring something, a report forward again. So I'll check in.
Thank you, sir. Much appreciated. Okay, so we'll we'll get through one item under other business before we go into closed. And that appears to be a request by councillor Carter with respect to development charges and the creation of a municipal services corporation.
I did, it was just that those were two outstanding items that we were dealing with. And I just wanted to get an update as to what the status of of those were. Because recall, we had to go out and spend the money on the consultants to get our growth. You know, official growth plans or numbers so that they could be used if we wanted to look at development charges and 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 that area. So I just wanted to find out what our status was. And then the, you know, sort of the next steps on 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 the other items.
Okay.
We can, we can, so I was my, I'm misunderstanding councillor. I know we reached out just before I went on holidays. We'll bring a report back or an update status report on both those items for the next council meeting.
That's fine. I just didn't want it to get lost.
No, I just see that there's a a resolution sign beside this and I thought, well, this is a different approach to looking, seeking information.
Sorry, that's me using my past history on things of this nature.
So no resolution required with respect to this. Okay, could I have a motion to go into closed session? Councillor Dayu and councillor Carter. And I think we'll take a ten minute break before we actually start our closed session. To go into closed. Councillors Shell and Dayu.
Be it resolved that, I'm just looking right at it, excuse me. Be it resolved that county council enter into closed session with following reasons. Personal matter identifying individual, labor, sorry, labor relations information and a position or plan procedure instruction to apply to any negotiations carried out on behalf of the corporation.
All in favor? That's carried. Welcome back to the open session. One resolution as a follow up to our closed session discussion. Could I have a mover in a second or two recommend councillors Fury and myself to be appointed to the Triple HS Board? Councillor Burton and councillor Carter? Or councillor Carter, did you have a question?
No, go ahead. That's fine.
Okay.
Be it resolved that councillors Fury and Warden Danos would be important to represent Halberton County Council on the Triple HS Board.
All in favor? That's carried.
Sorry, now I have a question.
Go ahead.
Don't don't we need to approve our discussion in closed session, the resolution we passed?
If my process wise, that will come, that will be done at our April meeting.
Okay.
Because if if just for way of explanation, because the agreement is the implementation tool of the decision of council, that's when it will come forward.
Right, but we gave you directions, so I just thought we had to approve.
Direction, we don't need a resolution to that.
Not on the direction, no.
I I did want to just take a brief moment to acknowledge the loss of our staff member, Rob Stevens, and offer condolences to his family. Rob worked in in public works and has been with us or was with us since two thousand and eleven. He was one of our working foremen and he was the union president who who took part in recent negotiations with us. So just on behalf of council, our condolences and to his family. And next up are the bylaws. So could I have a mover in a second or to authorize the agreement with the Canadian Union of Public Employees? Local nineteen sixty, mover in a second or question?
Yes.
I'm not familiar with what you're referring to.
Sorry, Warden. So it's just, but there's some terminology discrepancy between who is who is the signing authority. And it was, so it's, I've been making this correction that we go along. It's the warden, the clerk will be authorized to.
Okay. So we have a mover in a second or was councillor Fury, councillor Carter?
Be it resolved that bylaw forty two thirty six being a bylaw to authorize an agreement to be signed by the warden and clerk with the Canadian Union of Public Employees, local nineteen sixty, be considered to be read a first, second and third time and finally passed.
All in favor? That's carried. Are there any notice of motions? Uh, next is the confirming bylaw. Could I have a mover in a second or for the confirming bylaw? Councillor Carter, councillor Shell?
Be it resolved that bylaw forty two thirty seven being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the March thirteenth, twenty twenty four meeting of Halberton County Council be considered to be read a first, second and third time and finally passed here.
All in favor? That's carried. And finally, we'll turn a second or two adjourned. Councillor McKechnie, second by councillor Dayu.
Be it resolved that March twenty seventh, twenty four meeting of Halberton County Council be adjourned at eleven forty AM.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Party?